Is now joining.
Meeting. And can we find out, we'll do a roll call. Okay. Joy Bancroft?
I'm here.
Suzy Duranzo?
Here.
Supervisor Angus?
Here.
Here.
Dalton Barlow? I don't see him online either. And Verlaine Tinwell?
Here.
We do have a quorum. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we do have our, I don't know if you're petitioners or whatever you are, both of them were able to show up again today, so we're happy about that. Do we have John or who else is on the phone? John, are you on the phone with your group? Are you muted? Yes, he is there.
I apologize for that. Good morning, Madam Chair, trustees. This is John Hass with Gallagher Benefits.
Anyone else on the phone?
Good morning. This is Lindsey Barrett with American Health Group, and I also have Jennifer Hoopentall here with us as well today.
Okay.
And good morning. This is Rick Seithamal from Meritane Health.
Amanda Weaver with Gallagher.
Marina Waddle with the Meritane Health.
All right, call to the public. Anybody, I don't see anybody who wants to speak. Nobody's raising their hands or coming forward. So we'll go on to discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding a member appeal. This is one we can go into executive session if we need to, if somebody wants to make a motion. Otherwise, we can just have discussion. Anybody on the phone?
Madam Chairman, this is Suzy. Did we get any information from Kingman Regional? I think the last information we had, we had Meritane and the doctor and the rest. We have not had any conversation with Kingman Regional, who probably did the pre-certification, or the request for pre-certification.
Good morning. No to KRMC. And just out of the device that there is going to be discussion with the medical piece of this, then we would want to go into executive session because that has been requested by the appellant. Okay, unless we're doing just the discussion for decision.
I do have a question for Kingman Regional.
They won't be on the line. They won't be available.
They won't?
No.
Not even in executive session?
No.
Yep.
Basically. And it's, like I said, it's been requested for executive session. So, but even with KRMC, it was late yesterday to be able to ask, so their request won't be put in.
The reason I'm asking is because it's very critical in the process that I was looking at. Because I reviewed all the EOBs and everything, and it goes back to what did Kingman Regional say and do when they requested for the pre-certification, which at the time, the insurance says they don't need it. Because it goes back to that. And my other question is, was there any communication from Kingman Regional to the doctor from Barrow for any information requested by the insurance?
That part I would not be able to advise to.
I don't believe Kingman Regional ever...
You want to come to the mic?
Yeah.
Just so people on the phone can hear you, please.
I don't believe Kingman Regional ever reached out to Barrow. Unfortunately, with the late notice on, or request from Kingman Regional, we weren't able to get anybody from the infusion center or the billing office to appear today. So Kingman Regional, Ameritas is who does the infusions. Kingman Regional medical bills through their billing office. So even internally, they're not all necessarily on the same page. So I do know that Ameritas, which is the outpatient infusion center provider, is the one who called for the pre-cert, because they had told us at one of the appointments that it was not required. And so I can tell you that they spoke to them. Now billing would be through the Kingman Regional Billing Department, who is not necessarily the same entity as Ameritas.
So are you saying that Kingman Regional did not do the pre-cert? It was the provider of the infusion?
It was the infusion provider under the umbrella of Kingman Regional Medical Center. So they are, Ameritas handles outpatient infusion for Kingman Regional Medical Center. So when you go to the doctor's office at 1739 Beverly, that is part of the Kingman Regional Medical Center, the provider for outpatient infusion is Ameritas. They're contracted for it. Now Ameritas bills through the Kingman Regional Medical Center Billing Office. So it adds layers of difficulty and confusion in figuring things out. I can tell you that Ameritas was the staff who called, the actual provider of the infusion was the one who called for the pre-cert when they were told it was not required.
Okay. So did KRMC and Ameritas act on the Barrow doctor's prescriptions, so to speak?
Yes. Yeah, so Barrow wrote a prescription because, and I don't know if we need stuff into executive session, I mean, at this point, I'm comfortable saying this. Barrow is the prescribing doctor, the prescribing organization, and they prescribe the treatment. And then Kingman Regional Medical Center slash Ameritas are who provides the treatment and who are responsible for things like picking the brand of medication used. The doctor just prescribes the recommended course of treatment. And then KRMC slash Ameritas are the ones who take the prescription and make it happen.
So they would still need to be pre-certified even though your position, the patient's position, is that the doctor at Barrow's got the pre-certification by calling and saying, is this treatment covered?
Amber may have spoke to the doctor about treatment being covered. I can tell you that KRMC, Ameritas are the ones who called regarding pre-certification and were told it was not necessary. So that was, that was the actual provider engaged in the service, not the prescribing doctor.
Do we know if, when they asked for that at KRMC, did they say this treatment for this illness?
I don't know that we have any idea of a conversation. That would be...
That's my problem.
That would be Meritane customer support and Ameritas with the Infusion Center. So if we do go into executive session, I can talk about that the summary plan document that is available through Meritane still shows infusions being covered. It does not show the exclusion that was talked about on January 1st. If you, as an employee of Mojave County, go through the Meritane website, it does not have the updated requirement. It still says that, that the treatments that were administered do not require the pre-certification. Now, there was an email sent out at some point that updated that. However, if you go to look today or yesterday, as I did, it's not reflected anywhere on our Intranet as far as logging in through Meritane.
But all the employees received notification of that in November, I believe, was my notes?
Over. Leanne, say, in October.
Madam Chairman, the main reason I raise the issue of the involvement of Kingman Regional or Ameritas, because I think for me, that's where the process started. I'm not questioning the issue of medically necessary here. I did ask the question, yes, to HR, you know, if, if, if a procedure or a drug or whatever does not require a pre-certification, does the provider, is the provider required to provide requests for pre-authorization and predetermination after that? Because all the documents I have seen, you know, all I heard is that no pre-certification was required. The only time the issue of medically necessary was raised is when the bills started coming in. And in fact, if I go through all of the EOBs, it was only a response in an EOB in December that says it's not medically necessary. So you have a process from August, October, November, December, up to November, saying, you know, these are the procedure being done without raising the issue of, wait a minute, you know? I know they've asked for additional information as the bills are coming in, but no determination was done in medically necessary. My question is, at the first start of the process, when the pre-certification was being requested and said, no, we don't need it, should there be a process that says, I assume they told Meritane what the procedure was, what the drug that's going to be used, for them to say it's not required for pre-certification? At what point would the provider then to say, okay, you know, shall we move forward before we do the procedure to ask for predetermination? It seems like in the conversation we had last time, that unless it's pre-certified, it was not required to ask a predetermination. Am I right, Meritane representative?
Meritane? Who is there for the insurance?
Hi, this is Marina Waddle with Meritane.
Yes.
Yes, that is correct in that in 2023, when the providers called in, or providers called in to confirm pre-certification, it was not a requirement of Mojave County's plan document. And Mojave County being the plan sponsor slash the carrier, we base, how we're paying the claims based on the plan document.
Okay, so you agree then that when the pre-certification was asked, Meritane said no, there was no additional information at the time for predetermination of the process, the drug, or if it's medically necessary before the procedures were done?
Correct. So since we don't handle the pre-certification, that's handled by American Health Group, we just provide a response based on the plan document that's currently in place with Mojave County. At that time, pre-certification was not required. That change was made, however, January 1st of 2024.
I understand that.
Being amendment.
Yeah. So do you agree then in looking at the documents in the EOB, that it was only in a communication in an EOB in December?
Correct.
I think that was a procedure, that was the first time you communicated to the patient and the provider that it's not medically necessary?
Correct. So what had, the process is, when we get the claim, since we're the third party administer that process claims for Mojave County, when we received the claim, we reached out to American Health Group to confirm if it was medically necessary, and we received information from them that it was not based on the criteria and the specifics, I believe. But they would have to provide more information on that standpoint, and it's pretty standard.
Yes, I understand that. Why would it take that long? Why would it not be at the pre-certification stage, even if it's not required?
Suzy, let me just say that on the October 26th EOB, which was processed November 20th, that also, so it's a little bit earlier than, than January or whatever, that also is asking for medical records documenting the necessity.
Yeah, I understand that. In fact, I have that starred here that they have requested medical information way back as EOBs for August, in September. But determining it's not medically necessary was done in December. They were asking for information on that one.
But they continuously asked for additional information and specifically are asking if it's medically necessary.
Yeah, but not making a determination that's medically necessary at that point. My point is, you know, I'm not questioning the medically necessary portion of it. At what point in the process should our insurance require this information so that the patient or the provider is not stuck with this thing after the fact? It seems like in reviewing, in reviewing all the docu... I'm sorry.
When we received the claims, that's when we started asking the questions as the claim processor of, of American Health Group. We received the claims in September. We reached out to American Health Group. American Health Group then requested the medical necessity documentation from the provider, is my understanding. And it took the provider that long to provide the information to them. But I will let American Health Group address that, because I'm not sure of all the specifics.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I just jump in here?
Yes.
You know, we're going, we're going through the same thing over and over and over again, like last meeting. And I think we need to kind of cut through it. And I, I want some legal advice from our attorneys. I guess we should go into executive session real fast, because at some point, we have to make a decision. And, you know, I think we have the information, whether we like it or not, I think we're going to have all the information that we're going to get to make a decision. That's what, how I feel. Does anybody else feel that way?
Okay, so are you making a motion to go into executive session?
Yes, I'm making a motion to go into executive session for legal advice.
For legal advice, thank you.
Yes.
We have a motion in a second to go into executive session. Ms. Tinway?
Ooh. We need to... Yeah, we need to call for the vote.
Right. All in favor of going into an executive session?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And by chance, has Dalton Barlow joined us? Okay, all right, we'll adjourn to executive session for legal advi...
I'll shut this in case my phone breaks.
Okay.
Are you still there, Hildy?
I'm here.
Okay, I'm going to turn this up really loud.
So...
I just wanted to let everyone know that the, the insurance companies are still online with us and the teams, but also Chairman Angus is available.
Yeah. Can I, can I ask that Leanne be in this meeting as well?
Yes, let me go get her.
Do we need the insurance people?
Do we need the insurance people? My, my feeling is I'd like just a conversation with the trustees and legal counsel, is what I mean. I...
I need... Oh.
Hildy?
Yeah.
Um...
...
We're back in regular session. Do we have Supervisor Angus on the phone?
Yes, I am here.
Anybody else on the phone, Madam Clerk? All right. Call for a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Angus.
Did you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I move to uphold the decision of Meritain. Uphold the denial decision of Meritain.
I'll second.
Any discussion? After the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Motion stands. Any further action requests? Item number three. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much for your participation in this bandit recess.
See what goes.
See what goes back.
That was painful.
It was.